Right face. Third post. Ready? Post. Present. Would you all please stand as we recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Right shoulder. Left face. And a half step. Ready?
You got a full load there, huh?
Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, Media Middletown City Council's order. If you'd please stand and join me in a moment meditation and a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I'd like to ask we take a special moment to remember the victims in the tragedy in Texas, as well as I'd like to welcome the Military Order of the Purple Heart who posted the colors earlier this evening. I'm in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston.
Here.
Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Picard.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here. In the recognition of the Purple Military Order of the Purple Heart, here we have a proclamation to present, I think, as well as a presentation they're making, so I'd like to invite them down to the podium to receive the proclamation. Thank you. It's certainly an honor and privilege to be able to recognize our designation as a Purple Heart city now and appreciate the work of Military Order of the Purple Heart and the work they've done and the service they've provided to our country. On behalf of City Council, I have this proclamation to present. Whereas, chartered by an act of Congress in 1958 for combat wounded veterans, the Military Order of the Purple Heart is comprised of military men and women who have received the Purple Heart Medal, which is awarded, in the name of the President of the United States, to members of the armed forces wounded in combat with an enemy force and possibly to the next of kin to members of the armed forces killed in combat. And whereas, the Military Order of the Purple Heart Organization was formed in 1932 for the protection and mutual interest of all who have received the Combat Declaration and is comprised exclusively of Purple Heart recipients and is the only congressionally chartered veterans' service organization comprised strictly of combat veterans. And whereas, the Order of the Purple Heart for Military Merit, established by General George Washington during the Revolutionary War at Newburgh, New York, August 7th, 1782, is the oldest military decoration in the world in present use. And whereas, in recognition of the estimated 1.7 million veterans since World War I who have been awarded this Medal of Honor, the mayor and City Council of the city of Middletown desire to become a Purple Heart city and declare November 7th, 2017, as Purple Heart Day as a tribute to the service and sacrifices of our veterans and especially the valor of extraordinary men and women who have earned the Purple Heart. Now therefore, I, Lawrence Mulligan, Mayor of the city of Middletown, County of Butler, Warren, state of Ohio, on behalf of City Council, hereby proclaim November 7th, 2017, as Purple Heart Day. And furthermore, on behalf of City Council and citizens of the city of Middletown, I proudly accept the official designation of Purple Heart City and confirm our commitment to honor those who serve and who have served faithfully in defense of our freedoms as Americans and gratefully acknowledge their sacrifice, bravery, and unravering commitment as patriots. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service. Get that for Nadine there. Would you like to offer a couple of words?
Sir, we have presentation for you.
Okay, alright.
Good evening. And it goes without saying, this is a special occasion for us. We really enjoy doing this. I'd like to present this plaque to the city of Middletown to be posted somewhere in the building so that all can see. But let me just read what it says. "The Military Order of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride to the city of Middletown, Ohio, for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans becoming the Purple Heart city. Presented by the patriot members of the Department of Ohio Military Order of the Purple Heart, USA." There's one more thing I'd like to do and then we'll get out of your way. One of the things in the ceremonies that we do, I always like to present the council with our Purple Heart challenge card. So, if I may... Comes with its own little badge.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your service. Thank you. And with that, we can move to our citizens' comments this evening. I've received one card from Mr. Bob Nolan. Mr. Nolan?
Sacrifice, the ultimate sacrifice that others have made for freedom here and abroad. I rise here tonight in opposition to legislative items number 46 and 47. As you may know, 46 and 47 is the grants to businesses by the name of Grandpa Joe's and Dedicated Motivated. Now, I want you to understand, I'm not against economic development. I think Mr. Atkins knows that. We've had a few conversations. I love economic development. And I believe that it will be the key to really turning this city around and bringing Middletown back to part of what its former glory was. The reality is, is that I think we're investing in the wrong thing. Yes, these are two businesses that, one is coming to our town, one is an existing business in our town. They want to build here, and as I understand correctly, Grandpa Joe's has already signed the lease. They're apparently already committed to this project. Their numbers, and I'm a little confused because I've read the staff report and then I've read the fact sheet that was backing up the staff report. I don't think all the numbers are necessarily jiving between the two. Yes, the owners of Grandpa Joe's want to and will be bringing a certain amount of cash with them, but it sounds like less than half of that will actually be invested into buildings and into anything that we can actually tangibly put our fingers on. Which leads me to believe that when I look at the number, the amount of money that we're giving back to Grandpa Joe's is almost a third, approaching a half, of the money that are actually going to be invested in the business. I'm not saying that we shouldn't invest in business, but I believe it's too much. I believe that it goes over and above what should be expected of any city to invest in a business its size, especially when it says we're bringing four full-time, or either two or four full-time jobs and a bunch of part-time jobs. And then the numbers, if you look at the amount of payroll that they say they're going to generate, most of those jobs will make less than $2,000 a year. I mean, I don't know who y'all work for. I know who some of y'all work for, but that ain't a lot of money in today's world. So I don't really think that these are going to, that Grandpa Joe's will be driving the kind of economic activity that we would expect for the investment that the city is hoping to make. So, I would hope that you would vote against it. And if you don't feel so inclined to vote against it, I do, as you five council members implore you, to take a moment to think about it and perhaps table the motion for some further discussion to decide if this is really a path that Middletown should take. Now, on the Dedicated Motivated issue, I live right around the corner from the old Kroger, where Dedicated Motivated has already set up shop, already repainted the building, already furnished it, and is already operating their business. I'm not sure why we're coming now and looking for any sort of financial incentives, but again, on this one, it's all part-time jobs and literally the amount of money that they say they're going to bring into the city coffers payroll-wise is way more than you would expect for those part-time jobs. So I feel like, you know, it's easy to talk and say, hey, we got these businesses that want to come to Middletown and let's support them and let's get behind them, but I think we need to be wise with the way that we spend our money. And the reason that I'm here is not because I'm anti-business. I've owned businesses in other states and I plan on, Lord willing, opening a couple of businesses here in Middletown in the very near future. But I would prefer that we take our money as a city and we use that money to seek larger employers who are going to bring a certain level of volume of employees to our city. Because, you know, five or 10 jobs here or there, it does add up over time, gentlemen and ladies, but you know, at the end of the day, it's going to take a lot more than that to bring our city back to its former county.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Thank you. And with that, that's all the cards I have this evening. The City Manager reports. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, given the election tonight and the long agenda, I've just got a couple of things. I'd like to start with some promotions. We have promotions both in police and fire tonight. It's been my procedure. I like to bring them up and introduce them to council and let you see the future leaders coming on to the city. I'll start with Chief Mutersball and two promotions in the Middletown Division of Police.
Good evening, Chief.
Yeah, good evening. We're having us tonight. And like the manager said, this is something that we started doing a few years back and it's a good opportunity for you to get to meet the supervisors we're promoting. The difference is tomorrow they'll have their promotional ceremony in the police department with family, friends, and their MPD family. And we'll do it in here tomorrow morning at 9:00, so you're all invited to that. The first one we want to, I want to introduce you guys to is Rakibah Med. Rakibah? Rakibah's a 19-year veteran of MPD. He's a graduate of Middletown High School, Miami University. He was a high performer the last two years for his shift, which means high performer is somebody with accumulated totals of complaint and arrests, warrant arrests, traffic tickets. He's one of those high performers. I know that, I sat on Rakibah's first interview when he got hired here when I was patrol officer. I don't know if he remembers that or not, but I sat on that and we got a chance to get to know him then. He's a high-energy guy. The community loves him. He's earned this and we're excited for him. And anytime you lose an employee like we just did, but you can replace them with employees that are just as good or better, that's what growth is about and that's what culture change is about. So I'm going to turn over to Rakibah for a minute. He said he's got about a four-page speech for you guys. Congratulations, man. And when we're done, I'll introduce you to the next one.
Thank you very much. It's the first time I've ever been here, so it's exciting. I do have a prepared statement, by the way. And it's short. I know it's short. I know it's election. But I'd like to start with saying that to serve this city as a police officer was the best decision I've ever made. 19 years ago, I was very excited to be hired to this city as a police officer. Middletown is my hometown. I've lived here all my life. And to serve it and to protect it was a great honor for me. Still a great honor. I'm a lifelong resident of this city. I don't know about you, but when I leave for vacation, and I don't know if you guys do this, when you go on vacation, you're gone two weeks, I'm ready to get back. I feel like, you know, I get homesick for Middletown. I don't tell that to many people, but I do. Today, I stand in front of you with even greater honor, okay? I'm pleased, humbled, and honored to be the next sergeant here at the Middletown Police Department. I promise you that I will continue to work hard to protect and to serve this great city. Moving forward and a brighter future is my goal. And it's all our goals here. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And the thing about Rakibah, that passion is real. That's not just on paper. That's how he feels and that's important. That's hard to find. Our next promotion is going to be Lieutenant Andy Warwick. He's been here about 110 years. I give Andy all our time. Andy's, he's been here 16 years. He was in the Marine Corps for 21 years before he came here. And he brings that kind of military chain-of-command style to us and he's a hard worker. He's done a lot of things here for us. This is a great promotion for him and for our city. We're excited to have him. If you, one thing about Andy, I'll point out, was he's always been involved in our K-9 program. He's one of the top K-9 trainers in Ohio and he trains dogs from all over the place. With that being said, I've caught him in his office chewing on dog biscuits. Can't do that anymore as a manager now, but we're excited about Andy and I think he's going to do a great job for you guys and for the city. So, he's going to say a few words also. Congratulations, Andy.
Some of you'll have to get used to me. Sometimes I still say "Ooh rah" and "Semper Fi" after 20 and a half years in the Marine Corps. Some of the things you don't know is, in the last 36 years, as far as serving the public, I've either been involved in the Marine Corps, Norfolk, Virginia Police Department, or Middletown Police Department. Since I've been here, I've been blessed and been able to be on the Honor Guard, SRT, K-9. About two and a half years ago, Chief got me involved in the Administrative Sergeant, so I got to learn different parts of the city, different individuals, employees, and that'll make my job even easier as a lieutenant. Great place to work, great employees, and I want to thank you all very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Real quick, I want to say congratulations to the firemen. I won't get to see you all, but man, it's awesome. And I know a lot of us worked with you guys and we came up with you guys. And this is fantastic to see that. And man, these guys are the best fire department in Ohio. I'll tell you that right now. We can't do it without them and I mean that sincerely. So thank you guys very much and thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you, Chief.
And we have three fire promotions tonight. I'll call Chief Lolly.
Thank you, Doug.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, City Council. Tonight is, I'm very proud and fortunate to be here again to promote three of our firefighters to the position of lieutenant. What's exciting and interesting about tonight is we have probably, you know, three of some of the most seasoned veterans on the department who are getting promoted. Some of them are as old as Chief Mutersball. I can't believe he took it easy on me. Getting nervous, but seriously, what's exciting about that is as over the last couple of years, we are slowly becoming a very young fire department. And we need seasoned veterans to guide us through the next years with their experience and their skill to part it on the younger guys. So, that's a real exciting thing about the three gentlemen tonight. And the first one we're going to start off with is Steve Riley. So Steve, you want to come on up? Steve hired in with the city of Middletown Division of Fire on May 6th, 1992. So he has 25 years of service then. He was promoted to squadman on June 21st of 1995. And tonight, he's being promoted to the position of lieutenant. And his wife, Beth, is going to put his new lieutenant's badge on. Nadine, get your picture.
Just like to thank all my friends and family that came out tonight. I look forward to my new position and I just hope I can meet the challenge. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Our second firefighter to be promoted to the position of lieutenant is Gary Myers. So Gary, if you would come up. Gary is, his father, Jerry, is going to be placing his lieutenant's badge on him. And Gary is one of the firefighters, actually one of the few firefighters who's held just about every position in the rank of firefighter you can hold, which is, you know, it's kind of rare. Gary hired in on April 3rd, 1991. He was promoted to squadperson in 1994 and apparatus operator in 1996. It's also alleged that Gary tackled a certain filmic football player one night in 1978 after he gained 98 yards on a run and tackled him at the one-yard line, but that's purely a rumor. He's just not that fast. But Gary's father is going to be placing his badge on him. And so if you let Nadine come around and get in position to get the picture.
Just want to thank the City Council and the city for the opportunity to be here for 25 years plus. And it's been a very challenging and enduring experience as I've been here this long and seen a lot. Hopefully, this will help carry over to the next few years. I'd like to thank my family, my son Joshua, which is one of our firefighters, my wife Sherry, my sister Pam, my daughter... She's scaring me down here. My daughter Heather, but her grand, or my granddaughter Henley and her son, or her husband Riker and my brother-in-law Darren and my niece Kaylee. So I'd, and I did, so I'd like to thank everybody again and thanks for the opportunity to do the job.
Well, congratulations.
Gary will not be heading up our family relation. Okay, our next firefighter who is being promoted to the position of lieutenant is Frank Baughman. And Frank's son Kyle is going to place his badge on his father. Frank began his fire service career with the city of Middletown on July 14th of 1997. He has 20 years of service. He was promoted to squadman in January of 2000. Held that position until January of 2010 to where he decided to go back out and get some experience on the trucks. Frank is one of our lieutenants who is going to be placed on the administrative day staff to help us do some administrative things in several areas in the department. So Kyle, if you let Nadine get into position, we'll go ahead and get Frank's badge on.
Just a few thanks, members of council, Manager Atkins, Chief Lolly. Mostly my family for supporting me for all these years. It's a really tough schedule to raise five kids and they're all here with me. I got twin daughters, Gracie and Alyssa, and older daughter Kayla, my two sons, Justin and Kyle. But just thank you, everybody. It really means a lot to me tonight. Thank you.
Just real quickly in conclusion, because this might be the last time publicly we have an opportunity to show some appreciation, but on behalf of myself as the fire chief, Chief Snively, and all the firefighters here, we would like to say thank you to retiring council member Dan Picard for the years of service you gave to council. You have been a friend to public safety, especially to the Middletown Division of Fire, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Mr. Atkins?
All right, Your Honor.
Alright. With that, I'd like to invite the Military Order of the Purple Heart to retrieve the colors. If anyone would please stand. Thank you. Appreciate the order coming here this evening and the designation as a Purple Heart city. I'll let everyone get situated and I know we have a long council agenda, so I know folks probably want to leave and get onto some celebration parties, so... Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Alright, well, they make their way out, we can probably get started with consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
For your consideration, this evening, we have the approval of the City Council minutes from October 17th, 2017, to receive and file board and commission minutes from the library board of August 15th and September 19th, 2017, and the board of health from September 12th, 2017, to confirm the promotional appointments of Stephen Riley, Gary Myers, and Frank Baughman to the position of fire lieutenant. to the position of Fire Lieutenant in the Department of Public Safety Division of Fire, Andy Warwick to the position of Police Lieutenant, Department of Public Safety Division of Police, and Raqib Ahmed to the position of Police Sergeant, Department of Public Safety Division of Police, to confirm the personnel appointments of Joey Robertson, Brandon Cantrell, and Antonio Pittman to the position of firefighter EMT in the Department of Public Safety Division of Fire, to receive and file oath of office for Rebecca Zakara, to approve the purchase of outfit packages for eight police utility interceptor explorers from the Camp Safety Equipment Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio in the amount of $68,606, including installation, to accept the resignation of Kenny Black from the midpoint library board, and to confirm the appointment of special police officers James Smizek and David Jones.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions listed on the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
We have four motion items this evening.
To approve a three-year contract with Senegro Central LLC of Baltimore, Maryland for the biosolids management service at the wastewater treatment plant with an optional extension in 2021 and 2022.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Atkins.
Yes, Your Honor. The wastewater treatment plant produces biosolids on a daily basis that need to be removed from the plant. This was put out to bid. Senegro Central LLC of Baltimore, Maryland is the lowest and best bidder, and the funds for this are included in the 2018 budget.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
To transfer a city-owned vacant lot located at 1708 Fleming Road through a mo to own agreement with Calvin McIntosh, who lives at 1710 Fleming Road.
Okay, a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Atkins.
Yes, Your Honor. We had previously demolished a house at 1708 Fleming. Mr. McIntosh has approached us to take possession of that, to expand his side lot, and he will be going through a mo to own agreement, and I do not have the agreement with me in front of me, but it's either $40, $50 a mowing. We will sell it for the $500 that we would always sell for, and instead of cash, he will maintain that, saving the city that $500 before title would transfer.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
To approve the request to expand the designated outdoor refreshment area to be expanded to include 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM on Saturday, November 18, 2017, for the Gripit and Sippit event.
Okay, a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes, Your Honor. The designated outdoor refreshment area normally is from 6:00 to midnight on Thursday and Friday, Saturday and Saturday evenings. This is a special event for Saturday, November 18. The process when you wish to expand the door for special events is to submit a request to the Chief of Police. He has read that and recommended the City Council go ahead and approve the extension, and staff also recommends extension of the door for this event.
Okay, very good. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Last item?
To approve a three-year contract with CBM Managed Services in Sioux Falls, South Dakota for the period covering January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020, for jail food services.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Atkins.
Yes, Your Honor. We put the jail food, our jail food contract was ready to be rebid. We only received one bidder. However, they are well-known throughout the United States. They are the nation's largest correctional managed services company. They serve over 60 million meals annually in jails throughout the United States. We believe they are a good fit for our jail, and we are recommending approval as bid.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
That concludes our motion agenda. Brings to our council comments. Mr. Picard?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to take a second, excuse me, to congratulate the police officers and firefighters on their promotions tonight, and to thank their families for supporting them.
Thank you. Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to congratulate everyone that got promoted tonight. Also, last weekend, I had the privilege of participating in the Candy with a Cop program. There were about 35 families, children in the Middletown area that have medical issues that are not able to go out and trick or treat, and so we went around door-to-door to these children and passed out candy. The police officers and myself and quite a few other citizens did that as well. Also, congratulations to our friends across the river at Madison High School for winning their first playoff tournament football game and moving on this, I believe, Friday to the next level of the playoffs. So, good luck.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Yeah, just a couple items tonight. I echo my colleagues' comments about the promotions. It's always nice to fill the council chambers on promotion night. Secondly, I wanted to congratulate Conan Smith, who is a Middletown High School cross-country runner, was second in the state last Saturday, runner-up to the previous year's champion by only eight tenths of a second. So, being a junior, I expect big things next year from him. Since it is election day, I wanted to wish all the candidates that are up for election or reelection good luck. Certainly timely that we had the Military Order of the Purple Heart tonight. It's so easy to take voting for granted, but so many people have bled and died and been away from their families for that privilege that we all enjoy. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Bronston?
Yes. Well, I've been one of those out campaigning, and, you know, during this last few weeks, we had a lot of activities going on. We had First Friday events. We had the Halloween event in the streets on Main Street. Quite a crowd turned out, even though the weather was cold and wet, all of that. And I wanted to group our congratulations and include in there not only congratulations for the promotions here, but also, one of our councilmen owns the Bohannon Roofing Company, and in the Bohannon Roofing Company, we're celebrating 25 years in Middletown. And I just wanted to say to Steve, congratulations, and many more years.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
On your endeavors, yeah. And I wanted to say to my husband, who's here in the audience tonight, that, you know, it's an honor to receive this medal that we all got, and thank you for serving. And I know there's a lot of things that he suffers now because of his serving, and we do honor you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is certainly a great tribute. This Purple Heart City designation occurred leading up to Veterans Day. Often, we tend to overlook the veterans because they're way and out of sight and out of mind, but the folks that have served and have served so well, it is important to recognize them. So, it's fitting. We do have a number of Veterans Day services coming up on the 11th, and look forward to participating in some of those and express our appreciation of them. But it's very fitting and a great honor that we were able to receive that designation. And with that, Ms. Fox, we can move on to our somewhat lengthy legislation for this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
We've started.
That's correct. There are 19 items of legislation on the agenda this evening. There are two that are declaring an emergency and will require action tonight. Therefore, we will need a motion to waive the charter provision requiring two separate readings as to the following. The first is ordinance number O-2017-44. The second will be ordinance number O-2017-45. There are a few other emergencies, but there are no action requested this evening.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the charter that requires reading on two separate days and declare ordinance 2017-44 and -45 emergencies, and to be read one time only.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
First up on our agenda this evening is resolution number R-2017-31. This is a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio. This is for the period ending December 31, 2017, and is in regards to the auto and gas tax fund. This is a second reading and will require action this evening.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Next is ordinance number O-2017-43. This is an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract between the city and Joe M. Properties LLC for the transfer of city-owned property. This is a second reading and is ready for action.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Next is ordinance number O-2017-44. This is an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing the second extension of a lease of certain real property to the Butler County Community Health Consortium and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. The Butler County Community Health Consortium has been operating down at Ninth Avenue with various social services since approximately 1999. They have gone through a couple iterations, and we've been through two or three leases with them. We provided the building at no cost to them with the understanding that they would maintain the building for us and also pay all the utilities. And so, it's been a good arrangement. They had a lease that went out in 2011. We extended it for another five years to 2016. They went month to month. They are interested in executing another five-year agreement. The only thing they had asked, and you'll see this, 44, resolution number 44 is for the lease. Resolution 45, which is your next piece of legislation, removes a clause that was in the first two leases that the building would be removed and demolished at their expense if they chose to vacate it. That building even now is in very solid position, given the status of the economy and everything else. If that building does become vacant, we believe we can reoccupy it with some type of business and believe it should not be demolished in the condition that it's in. So, your resolution number 45 will ask that that be addendum to remove that clause from the lease. But 44 is the lease. 45 will be an addendum to the agreement between us taking that demolition clause out.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Atkins?
Yeah, I had two items from Mr. Atkins. Am I reading, maybe I'm reading the staff report incorrectly. Have they not had a lease since August 31 of 2016?
That's correct. They've been operating month to month, and we both agreed that it was time to formalize that again and get it cleaned up.
Yeah, I agree. And then, on the demo, is there any history to why that was in the original contract, why they thought, however many years ago, that was a good idea?
I could add a little bit of color to that in terms of the history. I think it was just in terms of the effective use of that, because we recognize they built a new facility, you know, adjacent to, and if they vacated that and didn't have immediate use for it, we thought that, you know, have another clinic kind of next to each other. But as Mr. Atkins said, and then we ran, and at the same time ran other issues with the former Senior Citizen Center with the, like, some of the HUD money that was used for, you know, that building for the construction. So, it was just best to do that, so.
Was that also HUD money that built the, this building?
In some form or fashion.
I believe it was, but it was before my time, but my understanding is that that, yes, there's.
Yeah, and it may be CDBG money more than HUD, but one of the two. But that's what I recall from my big history.
Before my time, but that's my understanding.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Atkins? We have a motion or second. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Ordinance number O-2017-45. This is an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an amendment to the development agreement between the city and Butler County Community Health Consortium and declaring an emergency.
Can we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Any discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Next is ordinance number O-2017-46. This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a pilot agreement for a small business economic development grant with Grandpa Joe's Candy Incorporated and declaring an emergency. No action is requested until November 21, 2017.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. In the staff report dated October 15, they had talked about needing this to move forward. Grandpa's Candy has made the decision they do want to come to Middletown at the Old Liberty Diner. They are investing $75,000 into the building and will be generating about $300,000 in new payroll each year. Their Middletown, or, excuse me, their Miami'sburg location averages about 30,000 patrons a year. They will be duplicating the Miami'sburg style but adding hand-packed ice cream at the Middletown location. We are in a place, as it's been interesting, now that downtown is starting to get hot again, and it's, we're having trouble getting places where we have buildings that are ready to go. It's going to take a fair amount of investment in the buildings that have not been renovated to get them up to speed with electric and HVAC. We do not, at this time, have a good program that is set up to do that. We are looking at our facade grant and some other things to allow us to make some changes to how we lay those things out into the future. But this kind of hit us in between where we are and where we hope to be within the next year or so. We are asking for a $10,000, up to $10,000 in economic development grant, $2,500 to use towards the new sign with the matching style to the Old Liberty Diner sign, $6,500 to aid in the relocation and build out of the new candy store, and waiving a permit fee of up to $1,000 towards the new business. They do hope to be open at the end of November.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Atkins?
Yes, I just had a couple. You mentioned the facade grant program. Is there a reason, has that run out of money? Is there a reason they haven't applied?
It is almost out of money. We can use the facade for the sign, and we can do that. There's still somewhere between 35 and 50 grand left that can.
DMI, doesn't DMI run that?
Correct. That's correct.
Is there a reason they didn't go that route? Is that money already?
We can for the sign.
Okay. So, that would, okay. And then, you did say it was 310,000 a year, right?
Correct.
So, if my math is right, we make that 10,000 back in two to three years.
Right. Correct.
Anything else?
Next is ordinance number O-2017-47. This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a pilot agreement for a small business economic development grant with Dedicated and Motivated LLC and declaring an emergency. This also is not requesting any action until November 21, 2017.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. The city's been working with Mr. Hartman, the owner of Dedicated and Motivated, on this project for about two years now. He's been working on getting a larger permanent space to grow his business. We had initially hoped to offer him a tax abatement. However, neither the CRA or the enterprise program fit this project, which is, again, why you're seeing a pilot program. We want to make sure we're business-friendly and doing the right things. Sometimes we don't have a program that neatly fits into the boxes that we have. As a result, we did approach City Council earlier this year to discuss other economic options that we could do, and this is the result of those discussions. He has made a significant investment, $600,000, in one of the frankly crappiest buildings that have been empty in the city, the old Grandview Builder's Supply Store. He is bringing in another $52,000 in payroll. He has done a beautiful job renovating that building, and he's exactly what we want, I think, in Middletown. And again, a lot of his money going into that building. I think this is a great deal for the city.
Any questions, Mr. Atkins? Next item?
Resolution number R-2017-32. This is a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31, 2017, and declaring an emergency. This would be in regards to the general fund, income tax fund, nuisance abatement, downtown improvements, Central Avenue, sidewalk, curb and gutter, and health funds. No action is requested until November 21, 2017.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. As part of the transparency that we try to give to our government, we do, you know, we could go to the end of this year and just say, "Trust us. We're not going to spend the money," and it'll be fine next year. We try not to do that. We bring these deappropriations to you to show you that as you pass the 2018 budget, we're pulling money out of the '17 budget to make sure that you know that our balances are going to stay solid through the end of 2018. This resolution is going to take out $576,300 appropriations out of the 2017 budget. It is then going to also deappropriate money out of the other budgets that were listed, police, nuisance abatement, downtown, Central Avenue, and the health funds. You will see in the future coming up here on these other resolutions that we will reappropriate some of those, but the net effect will be zero on those. We're actually moving those out and re-appropriating them in another place in the budget. There will be no additional money being spent. But again, cleaning it up for year-end to make sure that we've got the right balances and the right funds so that we get through the year, pay our bills. But the big ones, the $576,300 that's coming the year, pay our bills. But the big ones, the $576,300 that's coming out of the general fund, to make sure that these 27 and 2018 budget balance and keep our balances at the requested levels.
Any questions for Mr. Atkins?
Next is resolution number R-2017-33. This is a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2017, and declaring an emergency. This is in regards to the following funds: the General Fund, Health, Town Mall, Hospital TIF, Renaissance North TIF, and Renaissance South TIF. No action is requested until November 21st, 2017.
Anything else to add, Mr. Atkins?
Just a little bit, Your Honor. If you go down on Section 1 where it says non-departmental, the $52,729.74 is actually a payment for NTE. They will reimburse us for that. That will also be a net effect of zero. We have, we're going to try to pay back part of a loan out of a, one of the funds. We're not going to be able to do that. This balances that out for the end of the year. It's been reincorporated into the 2018 budget. The Health Department, which you saw in the previous one, is now being reallocated in this one. And the TIF funds, the three TIF funds actually had more money collected this year than we had anticipated. So, this appropriates that money and allows them to go into the TIF funds and be used for the appropriate use later down the road.
Any questions for Mr. Atkins?
Next is resolution number R-2017-34. This is a resolution authorizing transfers from the Central Avenue Sidewalk, Curb and Gutter Fund, the Main Street Special Assessments Fund, and the NSP Grant Fund and declaring an emergency. No action is requested until November 21st, 2017.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, this is for partial repayment of the loan to the, from the general fund to the Central Avenue Sidewalk, Curb and Gutter, in the amount of $34,500, from the Main Street Special Assessments of $26,658.92, and repayment to the general fund from NSP grant in the amount of $100,000. The net effect of this will increase the general fund balance by $161,158.92 overall.
Any questions for Mr. Atkins?
Next is resolution number R-2017-35. This is a resolution authorizing the transfer of monies for various funds to the income tax fund and declaring an emergency. No action is requested until November 21st, 2017.
Yes, Your Honor, the next four items are all related to the same staff report. If you recall, when we got done with the audit this year, we had a situation where we had taken money from the income tax fund and sent it directly to whatever fund it was ultimately going to go for. They asked us to go back, pull the money out of those funds, take them up, put it back in the income tax fund, take it to the general fund, and then go back again to whatever fund it was ultimately. It's literally moving numbers for the auditor. We did that for 2016 to clean up that audit. This is now doing the same process. He's next for, for the, doing the same process to clean up 2017. 2018, we'll be doing it correctly as we go forward, but, again, this will clean up to 2017 to make sure we don't have audit findings this year.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Atkins?
Resolution number R-2017-36. This is a resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the income tax fund to the general fund and declaring an emergency. No action requested until November 21st, 2017.
This is part of the same process, Your Honor. Can we just roll through these?
Resolution number R-2017-37. A resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the general fund to various funds and declaring an emergency. No action requested until November 21st, 2017.
Part of the same.
Same one, yep.
And the last one, as a part of this, is resolution number R-2017-38. This is a resolution authorizing the transfer of the various funds and declaring an emergency. No action requested until November 21st, 2017.
Okay. All right, and number 14?
Resolution number R-2017-39. This is a resolution to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2018. This is in regards to the 2018 annual budget. This is a first reading. No action is requested this evening.
Mr. Atkins, anything to add from the previous presentations on the budget?
I know, Your Honor. Again, this is the 2018 budget that was given to you at the end of September and presented at the City Council meetings on October 3rd and October 17.
Next is ordinance number O-2017-48. This is an ordinance establishing pay ranges, pay policy, and benefits for various salaried and hourly classifications within the service of the city. This is a first reading and no action is requested this evening.
Yes, Your Honor, the next three resolutions, ordinances, ordinances, excuse me, 48, 49, and 50 are the pay and benefits ordinances for the 2018 budget. As I had talked to you about during the presentations on the budget, the first one, 48, is for people that are hired before January 1st of 2018. The second one will be for anybody hired after January 1st, 2018, and the third one coming up, which is 2017-50, will be for the Health Department, which always has its own pay and benefits ordinance.
Any questions for Mr. Atkins?
Next in that grouping is ordinance number O-2017-49, an ordinance establishing pay ranges, pay policy, and benefits for various salaried and hourly classifications within the service of the city. First reading, no action required. And the last one is ordinance number O-2017-50, an ordinance establishing pay ranges and certain benefits for employee classifications in the Middletown Department of Health and Environment. This is also a first reading. No action requested. Next up is ordinance number O-2017-51. This is an ordinance amending Section 1040.03 of the codified ordinances, which addresses levying and assessing sewer rates. This is a first reading. No action is requested this evening.
Yes, Your Honor, as previously discussed, the city is in ongoing negotiations with the Environmental Protection Agency to address our combined sewer overflows. We are adjusting service sewer rates in anticipation of implementation of a long-term control plan, which we hope to bring, maybe by the end of this year. Total cost of that plan is expected to be $260 million over the next 25 years, and this will, again, work towards paying for those costs.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Atkins?
Last this evening is ordinance number O-2017-52. This is an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing the extension of a contract with Rumpke Inc. for refuse collection and disposal. This is a first reading. No action is requested this evening.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, we've had an ongoing contract with Rumpke. It also has extensions for 2018 and 2019. We are recommending that we activate those two-year contract extensions to provide refuse collection and disposal services for the City of Middletown. The total costs have been reflected in the 2018 budget.
Any questions, Mr. Atkins?
Yeah, I was just curious. Rumpke does a wonderful job. I was wondering when the last time we had any bidding on it, or if that was considered this year, or if they're even able to consider getting to you in the region.
We'll have to ask Public Works that.
That's fine. Thank you.
That concludes our legislation for this evening. Very good. 18 and 24 minutes. That's very good. All right, our last item this evening is an executive session. So, the motion I have for Highway 5121.22 G U on to consider the appointment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Ms. Skank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?